Council come to order. All rise and salute the flag. Please remain standing in honor, please excuse me, please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of both countrymen and women currently serving both here and abroad. Thank you. Thank you. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson.
Yep.
Paul Anderson.
Yeah.
Boochi.
Yeah.
Christensen.
Yeah.
Condon.
Yeah.
DePietro.
Yeah.
Furlong.
Kenyon.
Yeah.
Lucy.
Yeah.
Nestor.
Yeah.
First order of business. I'd like to, we're going to be going a bit out of order if anybody's following along. We're going to be taking the citizens' achievement and announcements right now, which is section four. And we're going to be presenting the scholarships. So I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Christensen. Counselor Christensen?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I know we've been focusing on the difficult economic times that the community faces, but tonight we have a bit of good news for our community because we will be presenting Malden's municipal scholarship recipients to the full council tonight. As many of you know, the money to fund this annual scholarship program is collected by donations from Malden residents who send in the money with their annual excise tax bill, Mr. President. And a flyer has been included every year and residents have been participating. And this year, we had 28 applicants, more than five different high schools and some that are currently enrolled in college, Mr. President. And tonight, we're able to award nine recipients from the 28 that applied. So we're very happy to do that this evening. I would like to note the efforts of the municipal scholarship committee that's been meeting regularly the past several months to determine tonight's recipients. And some of them are here in the audience. We have Lorraine Danker. If we could give her a round of applause, Lorraine. We have Linda Cassia to my right. Joe Lawless. Thank you for being here, Joe. We have Ward One School Committee member Peg Crowe. Not sure if she's with us this evening. Jean McQuado. And then finally yours truly. I don't know if Counselor Condon will clap on that one. But, but we are very happy to present to you tonight's recipients. So as we've done in the past, Mr. President, I think what we'd like to do is announce the recipients, their current school and their planned college. The students will enter to my left, greet the council, and then at our right, we can do a formal presentation after all the recipients have passed through. I would like to note before we call them forward, apologies from the council for not informing them of the change of location from City Hall to here tonight. That blame is to go to our council president, Craig Spatafor, who's in charge of letting you know of the change of location. So just getting to council, that was my fault. So with that being said, our first recipient tonight, and just before we do that too, we also, none of this would be possible, tonight's presentation, if it weren't for our mayor off to my right, Richard C. Howard, who has supported this program since its inception. So Mayor, we're very, very proud to present to you tonight's recipients. So first, we have Christina Casso, who is a student at the Mystic Valley Charter School. And I think her planned college is Suffolk University, so. Okay, our next recipient is Varant Codavertian, Case Western University, is a student as we speak. Varant, not here. Okay, we'll go to Ryan Patrick Smith. Ryan's in attendance. Graduating Northeast Regional Volk and on his way to Salem State. Okay, next we have Joshua Lee Maciello, a student at Malden Catholic and on his way to St. Anzlem. Okay, our next recipient is Jenna Lynn Loftus, a student at Matnon and on her way to the Mass College of Farmacy. Okay, our next student is John Paul Nusabaga, a student at Boston University. No, he's currently a student. Okay, our next student is Meredith Bartlett. Is Meredith here? Student at Boston University. Just a correction, the council president got me back. John Paul is a student at UMass Amherst. So we got that correction from the council president. All right, next, we have two left. The next recipient is Jillian Rowley, graduate of Malden High. Now attending UMass Lowell. Okay, and our final recipient, Mr. President, is Wei Chang, student at Malden High and on her way to UMass Amherst. Okay, is there anybody we've missed? Okay, and this is Varant. Varant, welcome aboard. You're our final recipient on The Price is Right. Codavertian, Case Western University. Oops. We're not taking that back now, are we, Mr. President? That's funny, I usually do that, so, thank you. Yeah, absolutely, thank you. And ironically, it's to my colleague on the right. Okay, well, this is good timing anyway. We're going to pause for a quick second, not only clean up the water, but also to take a photograph with these fine students, so.
Once again, congratulations to all the honorees. You all set, Counselor? Before we get to the next announcement or achievement, I would just like to pause briefly. Usually, we save personal privilege to the end, but I think I would be remorse to wait that long, considering the environment we're in right now. We are obviously not in our usual chamber. It is something that I know the current or the past president wanted to take the council meeting outside of City Hall and bring it to the powers that be of the people. There's always been some technical issues as far as reporting live from an outside location, but with the opening of the senior center and the technology they have here, we have the ability, obviously, to do so. But that would not be made possible if it wasn't for, first, Christine DePietro, who has done an outstanding job on not only managing this operation facility on a daily basis, but being a gracious host to the council tonight, so I want to thank her publicly before we get to the rest of the meeting. I also want to thank Brian Biggie with Malden Access TV, who's made this possible. Thank you, Brian. He's in the studio. And to Karen Anderson and her staff for making this possible as well. And our clerk, Sheila Famano. Thank you, Sheila. So I have the honor now of introducing the next honoree for an award that he takes, I know, very seriously. He takes his job very seriously every day. I know that because he tells me that every day. But it is my honor to introduce Kevin Alkins, and we do have a few citations for Kevin. Kevin is recognized from the Animal Rescue League and the MSPCA's Animal Control Officer of the Year, and he is the recipient of both awards for 2009. So congratulations, Kevin Alkins, who is here in attendance. Stand up, Kevin. I know there's a list of councils who want to say a few words of all you councils, so let me turn it over to Counselor Christensen first. Counselor Boochi, you want to start?
Kevin, good evening, everyone. I have a citation for Kevin from the city of Malden, Massachusetts. Be it hereby known to all that the Malden City Council hereby offers its sincerest congratulations and best wishes to Kevin Alkins for being named Animal Control Officer of the Year by the Massachusetts Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, Animal Rescue League, and the Massachusetts Animal Control Officers Association. Your tireless efforts to improve public awareness of animal care through the city's annual rabies clinic and the spay wagon program are to be commended. Your dedication beyond the career to organizations such as the Malden Kiwanis, Board of Boto-Registrazes, and the Malden Elks are also appreciated by us all. But Kevin, this is a little particular comment made by Counselor Christensen for you, and that is, perhaps Kevin's great feat of the mall that has caused him to be named this year as the Animal Control Officer of the Year was coming back from the vicious body slam put on him by Kamala, the Ugandan giant. Seriously, though, thank you for raising the pride and spirit in Malden and keep up the great work. Signed this day by all the members of the city council.
Judy. Kevin, don't go anywhere. Have it, sit in the front row. We have a couple more guests who want to speak on behalf. You all set, Counselor? Boochi? Counselor Christensen? Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel, I didn't know I had the mic.
I know you don't want to give me that, Mr. President. Neither do my colleagues, but again, I think, as I stated previously with the municipal scholarship recipients, I know we focused a lot on the tough economic times they were under, but as Mayor Howard was saying earlier, anytime you can get the kind of publicity that Kevin Alkins has generated for our community, that's a great thing. So it was actually Sheriff DePaola of all of us that first got the news that Kevin was going to be nominated and eventually awarded. So he made sure to alert us and the rest of the elected officials about Kevin's award, and he couldn't be happier for you as well as we are. So he has a citation the sheriff has presented, I would like to present to you, and it says as follows. "To all whom these presents may come greetings, may it hereafter be proclaimed throughout the county and the Commonwealth that the Honorable, the High Sheriff of Middlesex, on behalf of a grateful citizenry, does this day pay homage to Kevin Alkins in recognition of being awarded the 2009 Animal Control Officer of the Year by the Massachusetts Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, Animal Rescue League, and Massachusetts Animal Control Officers Association. Your dedicated efforts to spread public awareness of proper animal care, the many lives you have touched through years of social action and inspirational guidance, and for being a role model for all others to emulate, congratulations, given this day by Middlesex Sheriff James V. DePaola."
You all set, Counsel? No more citations? Okay. Counselor DePietro?
Thank you, thank you very much, Counselor President. We all have fun with Kevin every day, but I have the privilege of working with him because in my ward, in Ward Three, we have a lot of wildlife, and Kevin is always at the ready to help and assist me, and I don't know what I'd do without him, whether it be geese control or coyotes trying to have some lunch. Kevin is always there, and I really appreciate it, Kevin. Thank you very much, on behalf of the citizens of Ward Three.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Neil Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. If it weren't for the current job you'd be in, you're in, there would be some other award because Kevin, no matter what task he takes on, always puts 110% into the job. And being the Animal Control Officer is no exception to that. Kevin, I've known for probably 25 years and saw him, you know, from one task to the other, just always producing, always giving back to his community. Recently, I had Kevin down in Ward Seven where we were meeting with some of my constituents who were concerned about raccoons that are all throughout the city. And I don't know what Kevin did, but he came down and met with myself and a number of my constituents, and we had this plan of how we were going to make sure that, with Kevin's advice, that we cut off the food supply, and he was saying that that's what's going to keep this raccoon in your area. And it wasn't that we did anything, but it was almost like the next day, no one saw the raccoon anymore. So it's just, Kevin, your presence there seemed to have done it for us. And so thank you and congratulations for doing such a great job and keep up the good work. I know we're going to see many more awards given to you in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Neil Kenyon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have had the pleasure of knowing Kevin also for many, many years. And in fact, Kevin, before he worked as the Animal Control Officer, he and I worked together for a number of years at the same company. And I can tell you that almost on a daily basis, Kevin Alkins would tell me, I want to be the Animal Control Officer in Malden, and someday, and this is the God's honest truth, someday, I'm going to be in that job. That is my dream job. And it is my honor, truly, to be here and to have seen Kevin get that job and shown a pride in himself, in his community, and what he does day in and day out. And we should all be so lucky to end up in the profession that we truly love, going to work every day. And Kevin, it is truly my honor to be here today to see you rise to the top in the profession that I know for at least 15 years you wanted to be in. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kenyon. Counselor, anybody to my right, Counselor Greg Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to weigh in. I think Kevin not only exemplifies a good worker for the city, which is always great when you get these outside recognitions, but if you saw how he looks the part, if anyone ever saw the van, the pride he takes care of the van, it's always, it's almost like you don't do anything, it gets so clean. But that's how much pride he takes in the work, and, you know, like I say, anytime a city employee on the, you know, on the city payroll gets recognition from an outside source, it's always, you know, it's a plus for the city, and that's a great recognition for Kevin, and good luck, Kevin, and you well deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Paul Condon.
Thank you. I don't have a citation for you, Kevin, but I do have a lot of respect for the way you've always done your job. I don't think I ever called you, whether it be a Saturday or Sunday, where you didn't answer the call. I can remember I had a possum problem on a Saturday. You come down, you took care of it. I'm not sure if we realize how important your position is and the way you go about it. So I congratulate you very much. I'm sure that your mother is watching and very proud of her son, and for that reason, I won't make fun of you having a little trouble in that chair. So I won't hold you anymore, but I mean that from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
There's no lights on this stage, so any other councils like to speak? I can't see any other ones. Kevin, we're going to take a picture in the far right, on my right, rather. If you have a few words you'd like to say, you can come up to the podium because we're going to go over that way. Also, Kevin, before you start speaking, on a serious note, I know we kid around a lot, but I think it is an honor, like the rest of the council said, the amount of integrity and the professionalism you bring to the job, but also, I know the dedication you give not only to your job, to the Kiwanis, to the Shriners, to the Elks, the Moose, I believe every organization you belong to, but also how you excel in your role. You were the president of the Kiwanis when I was there, and you were one of the biggest fundraisers, so you take everything seriously and professionally, and you always give back to the community, and I'm honored to be here with the rest of my council members to give back a little bit to you, but thank you very much, Kevin. You're welcome, Kevin. So if you want to go to the podium and say a few words, and then we'll go over and have a picture with Kevin Alkins. Thank you, Kevin. If the council could get up one more time so we can just take a quick picture with Kevin, and we'll come back to finish council business. Oh, anytime, Kevin. Congratulations. That's yours.
You tie it, Kevin?
Yeah. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
The annual appropriation order for general government, the water sewer enterprise fund, and the P A T enterprise fund for fiscal year 2010, July 1st, 2009 to June 30th, 2010.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. You should have before you the usual notebook containing the proposed budget for our fiscal year 2010 and a budget message dated June 16th, directed to all of you from me. I won't go over every point in the budget message, but I believe it's worth highlighting some of the information raised in there, and subsequent to that, I'd be glad to take any questions from any of the council members on the specifics of the budget. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this, and in many ways, it reflects the draft document that was submitted to the Budget Subcommittee in May of this year and then delivered to the council last week. There are a couple of minor changes that exist from that initial draft. The major portion of any alterations have to do with how we've proposed to cover the deficit gap of about $4.3 million that existed in the May draft that was filed with the Budget Subcommittee. Across the United States and the Commonwealth, as you know, and in the city of Malden, we are really living in unprecedented economic times. The financial upheaval that is all around us, beginning in Wall Street and extending right on through the housing and banking markets nationwide, and certainly in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, resulting in the most recent bankruptcy of our largest corporation ever, General Motors, has resulted in the largest per capita nosedive in Massachusetts revenue history of recent times. The impact of all the fiscal tumult was first felt in January of this year, when we received word from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that we would be cut in the middle of the fiscal year under the so-called nine-seat provisions of the Constitution for the second time in six fiscal years. It was believed to be an unprecedented event that would be visited probably once in the lifetime cycle of all public officials, and probably unheard of for periods of 20 to 25 to 30 years. And here, less than a half dozen years, we've experienced the same mid-year fiscal interruption again. And also in January began to receive the signals from Beacon Hill that the preparation of the 2010 budget on the state level would be as difficult, the challenge that had been met in recent state history. They were dealing with a budget deficit in Boston of about $4 billion on a $28 billion budget. And it was clear that at that time, with the initiation of the governor's budget, House One, and subsequently with the filings of the House Ways and Means Budget and the Senate Ways and Means Budget, that local aid was in for its biggest hit, certainly in my service, 14 years as mayor, but probably in recent memory for all local officials, those that have been around for several decades. Needless to say, it's extremely difficult to forecast the actual local aid amounts in such unsettled times. So we're building our estimate tonight on our proposal on what we think will be the most likely outcome for Malden. And as you can see on page one, and the relevant sheets here are pages one through four, on page one, we forecasted about $53 million as being the local aid number for Malden in fiscal year 2010. That's $6 million less than what we received on the 2009 cherry sheets. So we've had to give a very hard look at our revenue fields on all other line items. We're projecting modest growth in local real estate tax revenues of 3.2 percent. That's a combination of a proposed 2.5 percent increase that will occur later in this year, together with the new growth that we feel exists in the community. We've eliminated certain revenue line items. McFadden Manor, which we'll talk about a little bit more in depth, is eliminated as both a revenue line item and an expense line item, and that will be ceasing online, on budgetary line operations as of July 1st. We will handle the cost of closing the facility offline from that point forward. Most notably, the device that we're using to close that gap that appeared in the May draft is the use of $5 million in anticipated reimbursement revenues from the school building authority for monies that have been spent to date and are reimbursed at 90 percent by the Commonwealth. It's expected that we'll receive an amount above and beyond that, and I think we're conservative in our use of that number to make up the budgetary underpinnings for what it is we're proposing to do tonight. But in addition to that, we've also anticipated revenues in several other fields that'll be of a one-time nature, $500,000 in a Department of Justice grant to support police department activities. We've asked both the cemetery trustees and the library trustees to increase their annual contribution to support city budgetary efforts to a $150,000 figure per department. I've been informed today that the cemetery department has, in fact, taken that vote, and they have supported the use of $150,000 in fiscal year 2010 to backstop cemetery operations. We have not received the same information from the library as of yet. We've also, on the revenue side, eliminated the pay-as-you-throw figure, because we are proposing to put it into an enterprise fund, and this year, where expenses and revenue will be more accurately shown, and will account for the income and costs associated with that fee for service activity that we voted on positively last year. But overall, revenue adjustments with a couple of those very large line item involved reductions is projected to be approximately $9.8 million less than fiscal year 2009. In order to correct our expenditure side, we've looked at several fields and areas to reduce. Most immediate one is a direct, not a cost-reoccurring reduction, but a direct reduction to the school department budget from fiscal year 2009 to fiscal year 2010 of $2 million. And the school committee has voted its budget, has proposed the positions that'll be cut as a result of the reduction in local funds. The one saving grace that they do have on the school side is in the stimulus budget. There are direct funds that will come to the school system to support special education and Title I activities that will help offset the loss of the local funding and minimize the number of positions that'll be reduced, which, right now, total 52. We are also proposing to reduce city side operations by about $1.1 million. That does reflect, however, the growth that occurred in fiscal year 2009, the year that we're in still currently until the end of the month, and accounts for activities around raises that were given during the course of the year for negotiated contracts. But off of the final projected amounts for 2009, we will reduce by about $1.1 million. In all, approximately 29 positions are eliminated on the city side of the budget, and by that I mean all non-public school activity. And those are highlighted for you in yellow in the document that you have. There may be one or two that might be missed that are in there as zero line items but may not be highlighted due to the tight preparation of the document itself. If we do not receive the projected one-time revenues that I've mentioned earlier, DOJ grant offsets from library, Board of Trustees, Cemetery Board of Trustees, and I forgot to mention that we will receive dedicated offsets through a lead paint grant that the Malden Redevelopment Authority will administer, and they can offset services in both Inspectional Services Department and the Board of Health for a total of $80,000. If all of those offsets don't materialize, then it's expected that another 10 to 20 positions across those particular departments will have to be implemented either as we take on the deliberations between now and the end of the fiscal year, or shortly after the initiation of the fiscal year, if the revenues do not materialize. As an offset to the pay-as-you-throw enterprise fund, we have put our hauling contract as an amount applied against that. We have also reduced our resco line item in the Department of Public Works to approximately $700,000, which reflects the reduction in tonnage that we've experienced in fiscal year 2009 as a result of the implementation of the pay-as-you-throw program. That's approximately a $1.2 million savings in our resco contract. The group health insurance line item, which traditionally is one that we see a very healthy increase on this year, is pretty much level funded, and a lot of that is due to the negotiated cost sharing that we've implemented with our employee groups across the board. All unions have signed on, as I have mentioned in past budget addresses, to a 1.5 percent increase annually to their contribution. And last year, we implemented a first-ever change in the co-pay schedule, which has helped bring down costs within the self-insured group health insurance line item. You'll note that there's a $740,000, $155 revenue reserve line item. Normally, that is not that high, and it looks somewhat healthy. I would, as you consider your deliberations, have you take into account that we intend to use those reserves to offset against those one-time costs that may not show up, depending upon those board votes and grants that we expect to receive. And of course, we'll have overtime expenses during the course of the year, potential snowfighting costs, and I anticipate that with some council deliberations on the budget, there'll be a minor bond outlay for capital infrastructure. I have received the council's vote on its support for fire department equipment, for instance. I know the council supports some additional snowfighting equipment in the DPW department, and there may be a range of parks that we want to be able to address in this upcoming year as well. So that revenue reserve line item will look very thin very quickly after the initiation of the fiscal year. It is our only set of reserves at this point, so we should be very cautious in how we use it starting out the initiation of the year. And in listening to the council deliberations prior to my presentation, I think it was Councilor Christensen that said, "We usually try to focus on the positive, talk about the good things that we think we're trying to do with the resources that we do have available to us." And within the budget message, you will see almost a two-page outline of initiatives encapsulated in bullet points, and I think they're all worth touching on briefly so that the public does understand what it is we are trying to do with the resources we have. Of course, the major thing that will happen beginning this month will be the full-fledged renovation of Malden High School. We will spend in total $77 million for the renovation of the 450,000 square feet down at 77 Salem Street, and that'll be 90 percent reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, some of which has already been spent and will be reimbursed momentarily. A small side note to that effort, I think it's very important to realize that we just recently, to begin that effort, borrowed $40 million in the municipal bond market. Standard and Poor's, which does our underwriting, upheld our rating upgrade that we received in June of '08, so despite these very difficult fiscal times, a very conservative bond rating company has held our rating at A-plus. And as a result of that, the borrowing that we did put out, we have received an historically low interest rate of .06 percent on the $40 million that we did borrow. So having the rating upgrade borrowing when we did saved us a tremendous amount of money in interest to be able to undertake that school building initiative at Malden High School. We'll implement a full-scale GIS system within the course of fiscal year 2010. We'll renovate the streetscape at Malden Square, part of which we're sitting in tonight, but we hope in total we'll begin in the spring of 2010 with the help of Mass Highway. We'll implement the small square improvement program in both Jutsin Square and Oak Grove Square. Jutsin Square is now underway. We'll continue our effort to renovate our small park system, the first one that'll happen this year. Previously, we've done Green Street Park and Traffin Park. This year, we will do Ferryway Green Park, and I've met with Councilor Anderson on that. We're planning major renovation opportunities to McDonald Stadium, Roosevelt Park, and South Broadway Park. Now, we may not be able to get all of those initiatives launched in the same fiscal year, but it is my hope that with the urban parks program, money being in place, that we'll be able to tackle at least one and maybe two out of the three, so that we continue the process of renovating our large recreational spaces as well. We'll implement, hopefully, the first phase of the Bike to the Sea project with our partner, Everett, and the Bike to the Sea proponents along the Metford Street corridor on the Malden Everett Line. If I said Metford, I meant Everett, sorry. We'll continue our investment in neighborhood improvements, including the implementation of a new lead paint abatement program that is being administered by the Malden Redevelopment Authority, over $3 million of new de-letting activity. And we'll plan for further growth at Forestale Cemetery, establish a foreclosure prevention program with the assistance of the MRA, and we'll authorize nearly $4 million in upgrades to street sidewalk and water pipeline improvements and treescape improvements over the course of the next fiscal year as well. We'll strive to restore the World War II monument that exists at Bell Rock Park, the archway that memorializes those residents from Ward One who had served, and we're going to expand the memorial to provide for a citywide recognition of more than 9,000 residents who left Malden in the 1940s to serve their country during World War II. And that'll coincide with the Parks 100th anniversary, which is upcoming next year. We'll initiate several energy conservation measures as part of the high school renovation project. For example, we're proposing that we use solar panels at Malden High to offset some of the energy costs. We'll begin work with National Grid officials to replan the National Grid site at the intersection of Route 60 and Commercial Street, potentially for a multi-use sports and recreational complex. We'll continue to work with Hallmark Health and Councilor DePietro to replan the use of the former Malden Hospital site, the 18 acres that exist at the top of Savin Street. And we will call again for the renovation or the re-siting of City Hall. I believe with all of the activity that we're able to encourage in the downtown area, the topic of whether or not City Hall should stay where it is, we avail ourselves of the opportunity of re-planning and re-engineering the streetscape along Pleasant, Commercial, and Main Streets, I believe is still ripe for discussion, and I hope that we can have some movement on that topic in this year as well. So I believe it is a very vibrant and a very active agenda despite our fiscal constraints. And I believe that we can continue to work together on this full agenda of items that will improve the quality of life for all of our residents. The setting that we conduct the meeting in tonight is perhaps our best testament to the fact that within tight fiscal parameters, we can still make good things happen. Several years ago, when we had that first experience of nine-seat cuts in the middle of fiscal year 2003, shortly after that, we began the process of trying to find a new location for a new senior center. And after a couple of years of planning, this council took the bold step in 2006 of authorizing funding to the mayor's office to acquire a site and begin the process of renovating a location to relocate senior center services out of the basement of City Hall, whereas existed for 30 years, into an appropriate location where we could let Ms. DePietro serve the more than 10,000 seniors that we have in our community. And the fruits of that effort are realized in where we're holding this meeting. There's no better, as I said, testament to the fact that even in tight fiscal times, with very good planning and very smart use of the resources... with very good planning and very smart use of the resources that are available to us, we can't continue to make good things happen. As always, I want to thank all the department heads and the budget team, Dominic Frimano, Frank Vacher, Bob Donley, Charles Damagen, for their efforts in compiling the document. In particular, I would thank the department heads. We've been meeting on almost a weekly basis since January, when we first received word of the governor's proposed budget and the results that we knew we would have to deal with beginning then and following on through the House and Senate budgets that I referenced earlier. And also, I want to acknowledge the efforts of our budget subcommittee chair, Councilor Greg Lucy, who has sat in on every one of those department head meetings and many of the budget team meetings to help us craft this particular document. And I want to thank Councilor Paul Anderson for his efforts in the efficiency subcommittee chair's position to come up with a series of suggestions about how to save money and how to derive some new revenue ideas, many of which are contained in the document. So it truly has been a team effort to prepare the document that you see in front of you, Mr. President, and the effort to make it final and do whatever changes the council deems necessary to make sure we have a balanced budget for fiscal year 2010 will be a team effort as well. And I look forward to the couple of weeks only that the council has to be able to take on the consideration list before it and make whatever suggestions they have. And other than that, I'd be glad to take any questions, Mr. President.
There's no lights on the stage, so I can start from my left. Councilors, any questions for the mayor? Councilor Christensen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor Howard, for appearing before the body. Just a couple of questions. Worst-case scenario, what you presented tonight is much like a lot of our counterparts are doing across the state, as well as state agencies. Two weeks from now, the hammer drops. Senate number is it? Is there a Plan B if that turns out to be the case?
Well, the Plan B would be more cuts or a second look at whatever one-time resources we have. You know, I consider the fact that we're probably not done over a series of fiscal years, tightening up operations all around. It's a euphemism for cutting positions. Our effort this year, the 27 reductions that we have on city services are built mainly around attrition. There's only less than a handful, a true handful of positions that are brought about by true layoffs on the city side. There are more true layoffs that are being implemented on the school department side. And if we're faced with a drop-off again in state revenues, then clearly, you know, we're going to have to revisit some of the things that we've left untouched in here and probably have to take them on in a more rapid fashion rather than giving ourselves maybe several fiscal years to be able to adjust to declining revenues. So the, there are no operational maintenance options, there are no other, you know, one-time expense options that we can reduce. We did that last year as part of the 2009 effort. It's all repeated in this fiscal year's presentation. So any other reductions would have to be done through cuts in personnel. And obviously, we would have to look to those departments that have not kind of borne the burden of what it is we've done tonight. There are at least seven vacancy cuts in the fire department, and there are another seven vacancy cuts out of the DPW activity. Your clerk will tell you there's a, there's a reduction in her staff by 25%. There's similar reductions throughout offices in City Hall. So if there are further cuts to make, we would have to look at those departments that have not received the cuts yet. And as I mentioned, if the one-time funding from those departments we're asking for, resources from, don't contribute in the way that we're asking them, we'll probably have to make some cuts anyway. But it would be that, together with any, revisiting any one-time revenue sources that we thought we would have to be able to soften the blow of a further reduction in state aid.
Is there anything else that's been indicated to you besides straight state aid of giving cities and towns the ability to start charting their own destiny? I know that municipal relief package has been bandied about up on Beacon Hill. Is there any more to where that stands?
There is a lot of discussion. You know, I don't want to get into characterizing the deliberations of both the Senate and the House for municipal proposals. The most important one, which mayors and, you know, and municipal officials have been asking for for a while, is the authority to be able to opt into the GIC, you know, the state insurance system. And for a couple of our neighboring communities, the ability, they have negotiated their way in to do that. It's a very difficult thing to do from a negotiation standpoint. And to tell you the truth, I would rather have the opportunity to be able to create some savings in our own group health insurance line item locally, so that we can return the savings to our workforce and control our own destiny with our insurance program here. But at least having the option to go into the state insurance pool with, on an upfront basis and on a one-time basis, save us close to several million dollars. I don't think that that provision is going to pass. In fact, it's come out of the Senate deliberations with an entirely different proposal than what it went in from the municipal officials with. There are several small other line items. There's a proposal to eliminate the loophole on telecommunications equipment. There's the proposal to authorize cities and towns to authorize 2% on meals taxation locally. Now, those don't get us anywhere near the kinds of potential revenue that the Senate is talking about eliminating. So it would not solve the problem even if it were passed. But the only big-ticket item would be the GIC option, and I do not think that that is going to survive the, either municipal relief package effort or the budgetary effort of the House and the Senate Joint Committee. So, you know, I think we'd be on our own. Other than federal stimulus money, we are using, as I said, on the school department, whatever resources are available to us, under the instructions that we have. That money came with the instructions to all school systems, that only half of it was to be used in fiscal year 2010. The other half was to be used for doing the same thing in fiscal year 2011, and only a portion of it should be used to support salaries. Much of what they say the money should be used for is re, one-time costs, because when the money disappears, we won't, you know, by that time, we'll have to do it again locally, or the school department will have to make the corresponding reduction when the stimulus money dries up, so.
Just two more kind of direct questions. As you probably learned last week, the ordinance committee took up the pay-as-you-throw, the petition that's been going around. We formally recommended to put that before the full council for consideration of putting it on the ballot. Let's say in November that does happen, would this revenue reserve be part of some solution of addressing that if it were to be adopted by the voters of Malden?
Well, you know, of course, it could be. I don't, it's not what I anticipate. You know, I think the revenue reserve will cover those areas that I have touched upon in the, in the presentation here. The pay-as-you-throw program has, has not cost our residents as much money as we had projected in fiscal year 2009. The bag sales will come in below $2 million. But the overall effect on the budget has been roughly what we projected, because the savings on our resco contract for the tonnage that has been taken out of the waste stream has vastly exceeded our expectations. And the line item, as you can see, from 2008 to 2010, is about $1.2 million reduced. So what was originally around $2 million is now $700,000. And the revenue that's projected will, on a 12-month basis, probably begin to approach about $2 million in sales. So in total, the program is a $3 million-plus swing on the budget, and that can't be replicated anywhere in here. If the expenses come back, so we have to, if people, again, theoretically, maybe people could keep up their practices, the amount of recycling that they do, but if the expectation is that some tonnage, again, begins to show up on the curb in the form of the waste stream rather than recycling, we're going to have to account for that in increased incinerator cost. And if the reduction in bags, bag sales materializes, then, you know, it's a two, you know, at least a 1.5, but I believe closer to $2 million reduction in revenue, we'll have to deal with that in some way. And at this point, as I mentioned about, you know, revenue dropping off in the Senate, there's no other thing to do other than to continue to cut personnel at this stage. And, and the revenue reserve figure will not absorb all the contingencies that we've built in for. We're not even going to get to the end of the fiscal year, I don't think, on the revenue reserve line item with traditional, you know, expenses that we may experience.
My final, just one of the key decisions that the council will make is going down the path of using a lot of these one-time measures to get through fiscal year 2010, but then come fiscal year 2011, we're right back at dealing with trying to pick up the slack for the one-time sources that are being proposed for next fiscal year, which could be five, six, seven million?
Well, at least between four and five.
Okay. That's a key.
Yeah, we'll have that, we'll have that issue. If state aid and reimbursements do not improve or at least remain steady, then we will have our work cut out for us next year. The one saving graces, the kinds of cuts that we have made, will appear again next year. I don't anticipate, and it's a point that I've said we'd have to negotiate in good faith, but it's clear that we do not have any resources to raise salaries during the course of fiscal year 2010. So I don't anticipate there are any reoccurring costs showing up in 2011 in departmental line items for something like that. So the one thing we do know is that we will have a very lean budget going into 2011. Whether or not we can come up with the same combination of either increased revenue, true, you know, reoccurring revenue, or again, a combination of a small amount of recurring, reoccurring revenue and some one-time measures to make up 2011, I think we kind of leave that challenge for then. But I think we've cut as much as we should at this point, you know, as I said, in total, between 75 and 100 positions. And I don't have another solution to be able to make up another $4 million in, in lost personnel at this particular stage, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Greg Lucy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mine is more commentary more than question, Mayor. Just, just so the folks know, I give you a good time, maybe, part of what we're trying to do on our end, how this works if the mayor presents his budget. We take it to the finance committee, and we do talk to department heads, and we meet that with the mayor probably in about a week and a half. But I do want to say tomorrow night, we are having a public meeting on the budget. The city council chambers at 6 o'clock. I want to thank Kevin McIlroy. When I was talking today, I was asking for ideas, how you, of the swing of the day, how you can get out to the public, getting the idea of, we're going to take it across Channel 16 as we're playing this show tonight, so I, if I can, they, they will build that sort of great resource. I have that idea.
Just so everyone knows how the budget process works, it's, the mayor intended to give us this budget a long time ago because of the influx in the state money and what, what local aid was going to be. You know, this is why we come to two weeks before June, June, June 30th, and, you know, you have to get things done in a couple of weeks. It's not that people haven't been working. His health department means every, every two weeks, and several councils have attended. His finance team has met pretty much every week that Council Buchi and I have at least listened to what they were trying to get accomplished with that, so it gave us an idea where, where we got to today. So there is a process to it. We start meeting with department heads next week. We'll have the police, the fire, the DPW, the superintendent of schools on Monday, then take up some different departments on Tuesday. And we'll, we'll meet again with the mayor after we deal with raising the budget, with any kind of public input. I know many of you have responded to the efficiency committee's request about a month ago, so there are people that respond, but people more than welcome to come tomorrow night if anyone has any ideas or some burning desire what should be in this, you know, not saying that we can do it, but, you know, it's good to hear because someday we, you know, we could put something back in that maybe is not in today. So tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, and, you know, with that, I would like to, also, Council Buchi just gave me a memo, the advertised budget is on the city website, so anyone that doesn't have a hot copy can certainly go in there and look at it. See you tomorrow. So, Councilor Carter, want to speak?
Councilor Carter?
Mayor, just let me clarify something here. The actual number used in this budget, we're not sure of as now because it hasn't come out of the Senate?
It hasn't, it hasn't come out of the joint committee, Senate and House.
Okay, so if they adopt the Senate number?
Yes.
We would have to reduce by another $3 million?
May not be as low as that. It probably would be somewhere between $1 million and $2,000,000, I believe.
On top of the cuts that you and your team has already made?
Have implemented in this document, correct?
Which has been how many millions?
We've $2 million to the school department and $1 million one on the seaside to personnel.
And if for some reason, the voters vote out the pay-as-you, pay-as-you-throw program, that would be another $2 million on top of this $3 million that we would have to cut?
Again, not to belabor the explanation on what the program means to us, but it's revenue-wise, it's at least 1.5 to $2 million over, projected over 12 months, which I think we'll realize. But also on the expense side, as I said, we've reduced that resco line item from $2 million, over $2 million in fiscal year 2008 to now, just, just $700,000 or even a little bit lower than that. So there's a 1.2 to 1.3 million dollar, you know, expense reduction that has come about as a result of the implementation of the program. Now, again, you know, you may not, you can't say that all of that tonnage would come back in. People may continue their effort to recycle now that they're in the habit of doing that, but I think they weren't doing it before. And if we went back to a standard haul-everything-off-the-sidewalk program under our ordinance, the way we were doing it before, my expectation is that some of that recycling stream would come back into the waste stream, and that if it didn't get back up to his, its historic number, you know, 26,000 tons, which cost us about, again, that $2 million-plus figure, then it's going to be somewhere in between $700,000 and $2 million. So at a minimum, we're probably looking at a $2.5 million impact to the budget, and we would have to find $2.5 million in reductions. Or, you know, some other revenue stream that, that equaled part of that, and the rest would be in cuts. But whether it's a reduction in the state aid off of what we've projected, whether it's a loss of the pay-as-you-throw program, you know, there, any number of contingencies that are of such a large magnitude that, you know, you'd have to take some drastic steps on. I don't, hypothetically, I don't think it's, it's worth us going there yet. But should they materialize, then the message should be it's probably, it's three times the magnitude of what we've done so far. And, and right now, there'll be some interruptions of fire department service. You know, I applaud Chief Murphy for moving manpower and resources around to adjust to the fact that he'll have less bodies next year, but there'd be some further reductions there. The one thing that, that constrains us a little bit on the kind of reductions we can make is the Department of Justice grant that we're applying for to support police department services requires that if we take the money, that we do services requires that if we take the money, that we do not implement any reductions. So we're locked into the obligation to keep our existing roster in place. And when you begin looking at the fields from which you can make multimillion-dollar cuts, you're only left with, after you deal with the schools, but on the city side of the ledger, you only have two departments that have substantial personnel line items, that's police and fire. Both of them are roughly $8 million worth of personnel and operational maintenance activity. Those are the fields you have to go to to get sizable chunks of reductions for personnel. This, seven bodies out of the fire department, for instance, will save, year over year, in their department approximately $500,000. So you're talking magnitudes of seven, eight bodies, you know, again, in part of our deliberations, we acknowledge that the easy arithmetic is, you know, 10 bodies, if you want to highly estimate it at $50,000 for, you know, for the cost of the health insurance program and salary, if you want to use that as an average, every 10 bodies gets you $500,000 in reductions. So it's, you're operating off of groups of 10. Most of our city hall departments don't have 10. We don't have 10. You know, Christine DePietro has three staffers, herself and two staffers, they run this entire facility. Mr. Fromano's operation to oversee, $130 million of spending in the controllers department is himself and two staffers, two and a half staffers. City clerk's office is two part-time staffers, Ms. Anderson and two full-time staffers. You know, and so on. So you don't have, again, the fields of cuts available to you to begin to make up that kind of distance. You immediately go to the public school system, which is half of the expenditures that we produce each year, and, you know, begin to lop off very large amounts of money, another probably $2 million, which would probably result in another 100 to 150 layoffs. And, you know, those are the kinds of results that you're left with when you're talking about having to cut the amounts of money that we're talking about. As I pointed out before in last year's budget effort, we have to, you know, we're going to be faced if the state continues to kind of default on their partnership with us. And, you know, $6 million drop over, and that's the best case scenario, I think, from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, over $50 million, you know, 51, $52 million. That's a sizable reduction in your revenue stream. And if we can't count, and that's half of our spending, we can't count on our state partner to, to be consistent in the kind of resources it's going to direct to us, then as a community, we've got to look at whether or not we're going to absorb more of the cost of doing business ourselves some way. Or begin to take the decisions to begin closing schools and closing fire departments because that, that is the next step that we are at. You know, after you take the kinds of reductions that you have here, you take seven bodies out of a DPW crew of 45, you know, and that covers all of our water and sewer activity, our cemetery activity, that's part of the DPW, 45 men staff. And everything that happens out on the streets for maintenance of sidewalks, portholes, and parks, you know, eventually it gets.
Those are, those are real numbers, and if for some reason those numbers surface, I think the city of Malden will be in a place where they've never been before. I think there'll be no holes barred. Any program is subject to possible cuts, puts us in a situation that, and I know there's other communities that are probably worse than us because we had our financial house in order, but to send us 50, 51 million, a cut of 9 million approximately?
At least 6, at least 6 million, yes.
Would be
Up to 9 million.
My opinion, ridiculous. You know, it just devastates this community, you know, and I can remember when we had 60 people in the DPW. Now we got like, you say 45?
We've reduced seven off of 45, so.
I can remember when we had 165 firefighters. You know, we'll be going down to about 114, 100.
Well, overall staffing will probably be around 114. Overall firefighters, you know, is probably in the 80s.
100?
Firefighters will be
100 firefighters?
Non, non-superior officers, yeah, non-officers.
100 firefighters?
That's for 24-hour, seven-day-a-week coverage. You know, you begin to examine whether or not you need that anymore, or you can operate a facility like this, that you can keep a vibrant library open, an urban library that services 56,000 people. You have to make some serious choices if you intend to cut your way out of it. You know, some communities have taken on overrides. Winthrop is a good neighbor and a good example of some historic choices that they've had to make recently about keeping libraries open and whether or not to shutter a school, you know, and take some other drastic measures. And, and as the state continues to, you know, to go through this very, very rough patch, and we may be faced with similar kinds of situations, whether or not we have to absorb some of the costs on our own, or if the public believes that we should do without, then, you know, we'll have to make some very, very difficult choices about what to do without.
Well, let's just hope that we don't see that Senate number for sure. Then maybe we've got a shot at this.
I think, I'm optimistic that fiscal year 2010 can be put together. You know, I think as Councilor Christensen mentioned, we've, we're doing some one-time, we did do this before, you know, we do have a roadmap for this. We did it during the last nine C cuts. And in preparation of fiscal year 2004, we actually, back then, used $5 million in one-time resources for that fiscal year. Our goal every year after that, and we did a series of cuts, a series of reductions, and examined every line item that we could. Annually, our goal budgetarily, and many of you have been here for all of those budgets, was to at least reduce in half the reliance upon that one-time number. And, you know, up to the presentation of fiscal year 2009, we got there. We were under $1 million in one-time resources that were needed to balance fiscal year 2008. Last year, we were faced with a certain, where the state level-funded revenues and then ultimately cut us in the middle of the year. We were faced in preparation with that, for that budget with the pay-as-you-throw question. And it, it did save services to the extent that we have them today in all departments. And we've made, by the way, we, you know, we've made a very, as well as I have, a very difficult choice to close an operation that has existed in the city for over eight years. You know, McFadden Manor is something that unfortunately, I had to say in 2009, there is no way we can sustain this as a municipal service going forward. And we faced a very difficult question of whether or not we could somehow move it off and, and have it run otherwise. And I think in the end, I, you know, we all had our positions on it, you know, in the end, I think we've made the right decision. But those are the kinds of things that we'll continue to have to face. And if it's not McFadden Manor, it could be the senior center here, as I said, it could be a library, it's certainly schools. And it's certainly a change to what the community is expecting. You had, you know, having Officer Alkins here, you know, is, it's a very nice community thing. It's a resource that most communities do do without now. I don't want to call it a luxury because the Board of Health and Kevin's department gets calls at all hours of the day and night, you know, about, you know, whether it's rabid raccoons or, you know, strays, any number of things that I think lead to the fact that he gets the acknowledgement that he does from our statewide brethrens in this. Those are the kinds of things ultimately you decide that you can do without. And it ends up leading you in that direction because most of everything else is mandated cost, you know, Commonwealth demands that we spend so much on schools. Health insurance is what it is, and there's not too much change in that. Pension cost is what it is. Heat, electricity is what it is, after you take all your measures you can to conserve. And then you get into the real question of changing the face of the kinds of city services that we deliver, or deciding that, you know, we're willing to pay a little bit more to, to continue to have what we think is important for our quality of life.
Mr. Mayor? Is that Council? Council Lucy? No.
Thank you, Council President. Would you like to refer the mayor's budget to finance?
On Councilor Greg Lucy's motion to refer the mayor's budget to finance, all in favor? All opposed? Item is referred to finance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next order of business?
Minutes of the council meeting for June 2nd and June 9th.
Councilor Gary Christensen's motion to refer, to approve, all those in favor? Minutes are approved. Next order of business?
Application for renewal of a license to drive taxi cab, Joseph Basir, 41 Reserve Street, Malden.
On Councilor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item is referred to license.
The petition of National Grid to install six 5-inch PVC conduits in front of 170 Metford Street, a hearing is required.
I'd like to declare this hearing open. Anyone speaking in favor of the petitioner, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. I can't hear you. Is it on? Dan?
We, we can hear you. Before you receive meetings of petitioners as well, I'm sure you sort of have a climate in the public way.
Sure. Council Christensen?
Thanks, Mr. President. How long is this going to take, Mr. Cameron? Okay, and would it interfere with traffic?
Well, we'll work with the police department and be aligned with that.
Okay, thank you.
It might even be a conflict one day.
Okay.
Thank you, Council. Any other questions for the Councilor Paul DePietro?
Thank you, Paul. Dan, I know you completed most of your work on the double falls from the mayor of previous year, within the last month or so, as well as the podcast. Have you had any contact with the agents?
No, I have not since the last meeting that we had, where they agreed to do a substantial amount of transfers this year. I have not spoken with them.
Do you have any, do you want to say that you've been doing your work?
No, I haven't had a contact with these specifically. I have looked at the system, the family health, you know, system, see how many of them do. But there was a substantial amount of work there for them to do. And, but we described the holes of the ground, which is a dark, and they take the hole with that. So further limitations we need to have on those holes. So many have been chugged, but this time we'll restore those holes and the easiest ones, and we're needing to take them off of this.
Would you, do us a favor, check the energy, how they're progressing, because they have quite an aggressive schedule they were calling out to make up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor DePietro. Any other questions for the petitioner? Seeing none and hearing none, I'll move on. Any, Mr. Cameron, you all set? Any other buddy here to speak in favor of the sponsor of the petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none and hearing none, I declare that portion of the meeting closed. If there's anybody else who's willing, is here to speak in opposition of the petitioner, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. If there's anybody here who's, wants to speak in opposition of the sponsor, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none and hearing none, I declare that portion of the meeting closed. Council Christensen, do you have a motion? On Councilor Christensen's motion to grant, subject to the following conditions, that engineering be notified and dig safe be called, as well as the street and sidewalk be restored to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works. All in favor? All opposed? Item is passed. Next order of business.
Application for transfer of a Class II dealer's license, ERC Incorporated, to and businesses City Line Auto Brokers, from 77 Broadway to 338 Rear Broadway.
On Councilor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item is referred to license.
Application for renewal of self-service gasoline permits, Gibbs Oil, 728 Main Street, has gas station to 14 to 221 Broadway.
On Councilor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item is referred to license. Next order of business.
Application for pool table permits, Eastside AA, 14 Webster Court, ITAMs Post 16, Oakland Street, Club 24, 787 Salem Street.
On Councilor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item is referred to the license. Next order of business.
Order that the city submit to the legislature passage an act to provide an early retirement incentive for certain employees at McFadden Memorial Manor, Councilors Paul Anderson, Christensen, and DePietro.
Councilor Paul Anderson for the paper. Councilor?
I got it. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Basically, this is a paper that I've spoke to the mayor, and I have no problems with referring to ordinance. He would like to be present when ordinance holds the paper so that he can deliberate on it. But basically, what it is, is to provide early retirement incentive for a limited number of people due to the fact that there was closing. It's a paper similar to what Lynn did when they closed their facility and offered the people that were longstanding 25 years of service or 20 years of service, and they needed one year or something so they could retire. It has a class saving in that you wouldn't be able to collect unemployment if you're taking the retirement. So it's a, we have to work out the numbers, and I would, and I am working on that now with the members that are interested. So I would refer it to ordinance and ask the ordinance committee, when they hold a meeting, to notify the mayor so that he may be present.
Thank you, Council. Any questions for the petitioners? Also noted, Councilor Anderson, Christensen, and DePietro on the paper. Any questions for the sponsors? I have no lights, gentlemen, and Council Bucci, so I apologize if I can't see you. Okay? Seeing none and hearing none, on Councilor Paul Anderson's motion to refer to ordinance, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item is referred to ordinance.
The claim of John Stepnak, 57 Meridian Street, Malden.
On Councilor Greg Lucy's motion to refer to finance, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item is referred to finance.
Government is expensive. We've got a year to work on it if we rescind it. So I just make that motion so that I'm on record as being opposed to the pay-as-you-throw program or as, I like to call it, the tax. So if there's someone who liked the second, I'll take the vote.
Mr. Chairman, for clarification, is it possible to amend that motion? And let me ask you this, is it possible to amend that motion so that if indeed the voters by majority vote against pay-as-you-throw, that it would automatically be rescinded at that point? If I need to ask the clerk. And would the, would the-
Counsel Kinnon-
Counselor who offered the motion be willing to amend his motion?
Yeah, can you say, Counsel Kinnon, one more time?
That if in November, the community votes by majority to eliminate the pay-as-you-throw, then it would just automatically go away by majority rather than the 1950 situation which would say, can the council do that?
Counsel Kinnon, if the, if the question in November doesn't receive a sufficient majority as required under that act, it's possible at any time for any member of the council to sponsor an amendment to the ordinance. And it would only require a majority vote to enroll that amendment and the following week would require a majority vote to ordain the ordinance. So while you cannot change the charter to make the threshold a simple majority, at least at this point, and certainly not just by a vote at the council, you'd have to go through the home rule process, if after the vote in November, the feeling on the council is that the will of the voters is that it should be rescinded, it's possible to do that by an independent council action. Does that make sense?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, continue asking?
Go ahead, Counsel. We're looking for clarifications, so go ahead.
Yes, I am. So if a counselor here makes a motion that would say that, the motion would say effective the day after Election Day, I think, November 3rd, if the, by the will of the people, the pay-as-you-throw by a majority goes down, can we have a motion here today that would eliminate it in the future? I think we, for instance, if we had a motion here today that said the trash was going to go down to $1.50 a bag effective January 1st, and then a dollar a bag the year after, and zero the year after, I believe we could do that. Why could we not, in the future, say if a majority of the citizens vote this out, then indeed this goes away? No, I don't think it has anything to do with the charter.
What I think he's trying to suggest is a conditional amendment to the ordinance.
That would be correct.
Okay. I need to think about that and anticipate that being a question. I'm not certain. My thought would be that even if you could do that, you would still have to be able to override a veto. I think that that would be a much more complicated-
Could, I'm not asking that. I'm not asking if it would be complicated. I will ask the question again, if, if this body tonight determined to have a vote on to make the bag fee be $1 in January, could we do that tonight?
You would need, I think, you would need to amend the ordinance. You couldn't make a motion saying that the fee for a bag would, a trash bag would be $1. You would need to go in and amend the specific language in the ordinance, which any ordinance can be amended at any time. It can be enrolled by a majority vote, ordained the same evening by a three-quarters vote, ordained the following meeting by a majority vote, with the exception of things like zoning, which require two-thirds. But for your purpose, you could submit a proposed change to the ordinance that would need a majority vote to pass the council tonight. It can have an effective date of whenever you want, but it needs to be a proposed change
Counsel Kinnon? It would just be, I think another example would be too, is when we change the salary request, we have to change the ordinance before we change the salaries, because we do that-
So the, the ordinance can't be changed on the floor here?
It's not on the docket. You would need a two-thirds vote to suspend rules in order to get the proposed ordinance
I second the motion.
Brief recess, the council will have a brief recess. It's Counsel. Brian, thank you. Council is back in session. I apologize for the brief recess. We just wanted to make sure that we have ducks in a row and make sure that everything we do is in order. I do make a motion that I, I do rule that Counselor Paul Anderson's motion, seconded by Counselor Neil Kinnon, is out of order due to the city charter. And I'd like to have the Madam Clerk read the charter into the record.
The pertinent section of the charter provides that if a measure recommended by an initiative petition is not passed without alteration within 20 days by the city council, such proposed measure without alteration shall be submitted by the city council to a vote of the registered voters of the city at the next regular municipal election. The council received this petition more than 20 days ago.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any questions for the council? Does everybody understand? Any questions for the council? I know it was a couple of motions would be thrown around there, but essentially because it's past 20 days, we have to now vote to send it to the ballot. We have no other alternatives underneath our city charter. Do all the councils understand? A yes vote is to send it, correct Counselor Condon. A yes vote is to send the initiative to put it on the ballot in November. Understand? Yep. So, yeah, you, no, you've been ruled out of our, you're all set, Counsel. I'm going to make a motion to send it to the ballot. Clerk will call the roll. I make the motion to send the- Excuse me, Counsel. You have a question, Counsel? Okay. Counsel Condon, make the motion.
Motion to send it, send the recommendation out of the ordinance committee to allow the question to go on the ballot in November.
Thank you, Counsel Condon. I'd like to have the clerk call the roll. Again, we're voting on the pay-as-you-throw initiative to go on the ballot in November. So, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Counselor Neil Anderson, Paul Anderson. Neil said yes. Paul? Did Paul say yes? Oh, I can't hear anyone. Bucci. Christensen.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
DePietro.
Yes.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Lucy.
Yes.
Nestor.
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes. Okay, so it's ten to nothing. Ten to nothing, the item is passed and it will be sent to the ballot in November. I apologize for the brief recess and the somewhat unprofessional manner up here as far as from a couple of questions going forward, but we just had to refer to the city charter for this, this measure. There's no other alternative from the city council, so it has to go to the city council vote, which we did send to November. Next order of business.
The Standing Committee on Finance, to whom was referred Paper Number 246, Series of 2009, having considered the same, make the following report. Order that the sum of $101,118 being the same as hereby transferred from police salary to police bonus. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably. Counselor Lucy for the committee.
On Counselor Lucy's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor, all those opposed, Counselor Lucy for the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a paper we took up in finance. It's no, it's no cost, it's just, the money's been allotted in this year's police budget, it's just moving it into the right budget line item. So I recommend that the, the council approve it.
Thank you, Counsel. Any questions for Counselor Lucy from the Finance Committee? Seeing none on Counselor's motion, Counselor Lucy's motion to adopt, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson, Paul Anderson, Bucci, Christensen, Condon, DePietro, Kinnon, Lucy, Nestor, Spatafora.
Ten to nothing, and the docket is clear. Anybody for personal privilege, I will move to my right. Again, I remind the councilors, I do not have light. So Counselor Bucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take a moment, again, as many of my colleagues have echoed, I worked this weekend with the Mystic Valley Charter, young men and women who assisted us in cleanup of the Linden Park, and I do want to send my appreciation for their effort and for their fabulous role modeling about getting engaged in their local city activities. And again, thank you to Alex Dean for his efforts around that, and certainly will continue to support him and his endeavor to get this across the city.
Counselor Paul DePietro.
Thank you, Counsel President. I'd just like to inform the residents of Ward 3. The Fourth of July is coming upon us again in a hurry, and thanks to the line item and the budget that these expenditure remain the same, we're going to be offering us same Fourth of July celebrations on July 3rd and July 4th. The schedule will be on my website for everybody to see. I hope everybody can come. It's all free of charge, thanks to the, the budget remaining the same. You can look up the schedule of events on www.depetroaward3.org. I hope everybody comes and we can have a good time on the Fourth. Thank you, Counsel.
Counselor DePietro, Counselor Greg Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I just want to say there is a public meeting on the budget tomorrow. I think the microphone, the batteries went on, went on when I was first trying to say that, but, public meeting on the budget, they propose mayor's budget tomorrow, 6 o'clock at the Government Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lucy. Moving to my left, Counselor Paul Condon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ward 2 for the Fourth of July will be on the Fourth of July, on Saturday. We won't be running the Third of July, however, we'll fit in as many events as we can on the Fourth. Participation has dropped each year on the Third. Last year, we only had eight kids running the road race, so I hope that everything will be more lively and more participation by running on the Fourth. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Condon. Counselor Gary Christensen.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. And again, I just want to thank my colleagues for honoring our annual Flag Day ceremony that we had last Sunday. I stated that, again, despite the difficult conditions that we operate in under Mr. President, we continue to honor our nation's sacred tradition. So we had a nice turnout, and again, I want to thank everybody for participating in the annual ceremony. Also, just want to add, for the Ward 1 July 4th festivities, we'll be having our second movie night. We'll be doing an outdoor movie on Friday, July 3rd, beginning at 8:00 p.m. at Green Street Park, and that'll be followed by our regular set of events on Saturday, July 4th, from 9:00 to 1:00. I know Counsel DePietro mentioned that the funds are there to have these great events, except I saw they cut one thing out of the July 4th festivities, and that was the purchase of the dunk tank for the Ward 1 event, so I do want to thank the mayor for pulling those funds back. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if we have a sound. If we don't have a sound here, our Fourth of July, Ward 7, will be on the Fourth of July in Lincoln Common, and it'll be a great time, as always, and come on out and enjoy. And also, while I have a personal privilege, just like to, we don't have, necessarily have to do it under personal privilege, but I'd like to pull from the ordinance committee our recommendations to appoint three of the appointments to boards and commissions. I'd like to move suspension of rules so that we can appoint Marisabelle Benoit to the Arts Council, Simon Muzawik to the Planning Board, and Stacy Gilchrist to the Arts Council. We met with these three referrals of the mayor nominations from the, from the mayor, and the ordinance committee met with them tonight, and the ordinance committee members are all in agreement that we can pull them out tonight and vote their confirmation to these bodies. And I would so move.
On Counselor Neil Kinnon's motion to receive the committee report, oh, Neil Anderson? No, I'm sorry, Counsel, to discharge the papers. On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to discharge the papers, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counselor Anderson, I believe you already discharged the papers, you already spoke on it? I'm going to have Madam Clerk read them out, if you don't mind, Counselor.
The appointments are the appointment of Marisabelle Benoit, 55 Clayton Street, as a member of the Arts Council, Stacy Gilchrist of 92 Porter Street to the Arts Council, and Simon Muzawik, 61 Mills Street, as an alternate member to the Planning Board. The voting committee was unanimous, five to nothing.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to approve the appointments, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson.
Yes.
Paul Anderson, Bucci, Christensen, Condon, DePietro, Furlong, Kinnon, Lucy, Nestor, Spatafora.
Candidates are appointed to the Planning Board and I believe to the Arts Council, so congratulations. You all set, Counsel Anderson?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Counselor Jim Nestor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to make the residents of Ward 4 aware of two events. Monday, the 29th, we'll have a crime watch meeting at 6:00 p.m. at the Oak Grove Community Center. The Fourth of July will be held on the Fourth from 9:00 to 12:00, or 12:30, at Cordenly Park. And I want to extend my congratulations to the champions of the Malden West Little League, the major division, I believe it's the Mets, and the nine-year-old division are the Sand Nats. So congratulations to all those guys and girls, and good luck in the city series.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Neil Kinnon.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make an announcement that the ordinance committee has a public hearing on the amendment to the rental unit inspection ordinance. This particularly pertains to non-owner occupied homes and multifamily units that have rentals. So it's non-owner occupied that it pertains to in terms of a new inspection ordinance. So that is on Thursday evening at 6:00 in Room 609 in City Hall. Room 609. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kinnon. Seeing nobody else, I'd like to take a brief moment to thank once again Christine DePietro and her staff for helping us facilitate this off-site council meeting. She did a great job welcoming us here to the facility. I also want to thank Brian Biggie with Marlin Access TV, Sheila Firmano, the clerk, who helped move the meeting from City Hall to this location, as well as Karen Anderson. It's a little bit difficult working, not in your home base, but I think everybody did a great job, so a final thank you. Also, I want to commend Counselor Christensen and his Flag Day festivities, it was a fantastic event. The DPW did a great job, his staff did a great job on the Marlin Fire Department. So once again, congratulations, great job carrying that tradition forward. I'd also want to encourage all the seniors in Marlin to come down to this facility, if you haven't done so, and take a tour. I think it's a great facility, it's state of the art. I think you'd be presently surprised when you do come down here of the activities and the actual facility itself, it's very impressive. So we encourage you to come down here, all the seniors of Marlin. Also, I want to wish a happy Fourth of July to all the residents of the city of Marlin and to my fellow councilmen. I want, I'm welcome, full of joy. Everybody can say happy Fourth of July for that. I don't have a park to say thank you to. Happy Father's Day as well. And just to give you a wrap-up of the council year this year, our next meeting will be back at the normal location, at 200 Pleasant Street. It is a committee meeting, and then the final meeting, which is a formal meeting, is on the 30th. So next week's meeting will take place, again, at the regular location, at 200 Pleasant Street. It's a committee meeting, and the final meeting of the year will be on the 30th, the formal meeting. Thank you very much. On Counselor Gary Christensen's motion to adjourn, all those in favor? All those opposed? Council is adjourned.